We're going to start out with my, just my, the general, just the salaries for myself and part of my first deputy's salaries. Asking for a 5% raise on my salary. And asking for a little bit more on the first deputy's salary. I know last year we had the issue with the federal government saying that anybody that was in a position that was exempt should get the raise and then it came back that our first deputies were actually excluded from that. So you gave them a raise and you took a raise away. So I got, we got to looking and since the first deputy is basically mean when I'm not in the office. She's responsible for everything when I'm not in the office. We thought that it would be important for that first deputy to have a little bit more money differentiated between her and the second deputy. Right now, the first deputy only makes about $1,000 more than the second deputy does. And the second deputy doesn't have the responsibilities that the first deputy does. And a second deputy actually makes $2,900 more than what a first clerk does. So I'd like to see that line be a little bit larger between the first deputy and the second deputy since they do have more of the responsibilities and stuff when the elected official's not in the office. So I asked for a little bit of the, the raise that kind of was given to them, then taken back on them when they said that they were an excluded position and then a 5%. So the increase for that salary would be about $4,700 from this year from last year. Right in the beginning of your book on the first lead is what the county officials, a group of the county officials put together. So that's what she's talking about. We just, you know, the first deputy, like I said, they're, when the elected official's not in the office, they are responsible for things that go on in the office. They know how to do things in the office that maybe not everybody else knows how to do. They're your confidant, they're the person that you, you know, deem to be you when you're not there. So I think it's important that we give them a little bit more compensation because of the responsibilities that they have when the elected officials are not in the office. Right now, a perfect example of that going on is down in the assessors' office. Nada K had a really bad accident and she's been out of the, out of the building. And Lauren has been responsible for that office since that time. So, I mean, that's, that's, that's a thing to look at, that, you know, anyone, any one of us elected officials could have an accident like that happen to us and not be able to be in the office. And then all that responsibility goes on that first deputy. And I, I just think it's important for them to have a little bit more of a, of a raise and a difference between them and what the second deputy does. So I'd appreciate if you'd look that, you know, look into that this year. So if we take that, what I've asked for that salary and we split that in half, that would be $17,668 out of the general fund for my first deputy and then I'd pay the other $17,668 out of my perpetuation fund. So it'd only be, it'd only be a little more than $2,000 out of the general fund that I'm asking for for her raise this year versus what? Because right now, I pay $15,000 because her salary right now is $30,652. So I pay just a little over $15,000. So it'd just be a little over $2,000 increase in her salary out of the general fund. And I would pay the other portion of it out of my perpetuation fund. So, and I also, I also would like to just encourage you to all look at maybe doing longevity. I know the sheriff's department used to have longevity and they did away with it several years ago before I even came into this building. But I think if we looked at longevity, I think the budgeting process might be a little bit easier when it comes to increases in salaries. In my opinion, I think that if everybody knew that they were going to get a significant bump every three or five years or however you decide to do it, in the off years, just the, you know, a 2% or 3% bump in raises would be acceptable and you wouldn't have this battling every year about trying to get more money. If people knew down the line, I'm going to get a bump because I've been here and they're appreciating me for my service, I think that would be, I think the employees would feel that they're appreciated more. And I think it would be less contentious during some of the budget hearings about raises and all that kind of stuff. So that's just my opinion, I just would appreciate it if you would look into that. So, that's on that. And then, let's see, we'll go to the perpetuation fund. I'd ask for $17,668, which would be the other portion of my first deputy's pay. And then I'd ask for an increase for my part-time person to $11 an hour. And I'd also like to encourage the council to maybe expand that part-time pay, maybe give it a range. So if you think that your part-timer is doing an excellent job, you might be able to, you know, after that first year of them being there, you might be able just to bump that pay up and, you know. So when you're hiring somebody in, you can say, you can hire in and it will be from this point to this point. And knowing that there's a possibility for them to, you know, maybe, if they've done a good job the first year, they get a little bit of a raise instead of having to go in front of the budgeting process and do it every year and ask every year. So our part-timer in our office, she's doing an excellent job. Since we've hired that part-time person and Teresa and I are still doing some backloading and stuff during our free time and stuff, we've been able to backload, and I did this probably five months ago, so I haven't had to check in five months. But, and I know we had a little bit of time there, but we didn't do much because of being closed down. But we've been able to backload over 18,000 documents into the system. And I'm just going to tell you, during the COVID shutdown, that was a godsend. Because people could search online back and they didn't have to feel like they couldn't come in and do their searches. We're back into 1977 right now with our deeds. When I came in here, we were just to 94 with everything. So we're 74, we're in 77 with our deeds and then back to 84 with our mortgages and our miscellaneous stuff. So I'm probably not going to go much further back with the mortgage because I've checked the title companies. That's over 30 years and most of your searches are 30-year search. So they say it'd be kind of wasteful of our time to concentrate on that. So we're working, we're working diligently on our deeds. So, but having that part-timer in there has just been pretty awesome. And like I said, you know, I had a couple people that called during the shutdown that they couldn't get the document because it wasn't online yet. It was a, you know, it was a 60 or a 50, you know, 1950 document. And I could get it and then scan it and email it to them. So, but on a whole, I think being able to do that and, and having that part-timer in there just made it just pretty awesome for everybody to be able to continue to do their work outside of this county. So I appreciate you letting me have that part-time person and hope you continue to let us have that part-time person because I think it's beneficial for the county and for people to use our office.
What year did you say you're on on miscellaneous documents?
1984.
So you're planning to take that back to?
Yeah, and I've, I started in a miscellaneous document, a book from 84 to go back. And then I got in the middle of something else and so I've kind of put that to the side. But yeah, as soon as, as soon as, as soon as Teresa's working on some mortgage releases right now, because we've got, we got all the mortgages done and then we got, so now we're trying to put the releases on so when people look in there, they can see that that mortgage has been released. So if it's a, so we're going to go back so we know, at least back to the 1984 ones, that there's a release. So when they pull up and look on Doc's Pop, it'll have a cross records on it and show that it's been released. So she's working on trying to get some of those releases put in right now. So like I said, we do that when we're not doing the daily work and stuff, so.
You, you were actually the department, I thought, might have the most, well, I mean, not the most, but a very significant benefit from COVID reimbursement. Because, you know, I know there was a lot of challenges around people trying to close mortgages and things of that during the, when the courthouse was actually shut down. Is there anything that we could do?
Well, I did, I did.
To make that better?
I did purchase a Surface Pro so I could do e-recordings from home. I did come into the office about four hours every day. There were only three days that I missed coming into the office during the shutdown. One was my aunt passed away and I went to her funeral. And the other two were two days that there was an employee at my husband's work that had been exposed. And so they just said, stay home until we get his test results back. Neither one of us had been around him because Mike was still working from home. But he had gone into the office to pick something up and they said, even though you didn't see him, just stay home. So I only missed three days of work. I came in and I opened the mail and I processed what came in the mail. And then I got my Surface and then I could do e-recordings from home. So we continued to do those. Probably the best benefit would be is if I could take some, if, if there was some money to have some more of those documents imaged, taking them and digitizing them and putting them into, into our system and having them indexed would probably be a big help. And like the miscellaneous would probably be the biggest thing if that would be, you know, availability.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about the time, I'm just talking about being able to.
Because she was considered a non-essential office, so that's probably taken into consideration.
Well, I'm not asking for money for that. What I'm saying is, and I think, I think I did hear through another recorder that they're using some of the COVID CARES Act money to have some of their documents that they don't have imaged, digitized and imaged to put on the system because of that problem of not being able to have them because they're not on the system at the time. So, so that, that would be a benefit for us if we could take those miscellaneous and try to get some of those done. I just have to investigate and see what the cost would be for that. I mean, we've had it done, I've had other, you know, other ones done that they've taken microfilm and digitized it, so. But like I said, we work every day trying to get more documents put on, so.
Well, that is something that we need to write up, like request to be reimbursed. And so we can turn it in to see if it is even being considered.
Would I need to go ahead and just get an estimate on it? Okay.
Right now, I, what we're being told is maybe not. So that you would have to explain why and where and not.
The one thing about the CARES Act reimbursement that, as you're, that you're requesting them, you can't, you can't do something predict, to predict for the next one. It has to be for the current pandemic. You can't be, digitize the records in case we have that issue again. That's not allowed.
But the Surface Pro was because I bought it because of that Surface.
So I could work from home.
Yeah.
And voice and since I'm going to be gone, put it in my mailbox.
I brought her over to Mary Ann a little bit, so she already has a copy of the document as well.
It's like work, so. So the wording is very important as you word your request going down. It has to, it can't be anything future.
My thought was, you could make the argument that if, if the data is not in the system, you can't work from home.
They will cover it.
It's kind of even like my stance. We were essential, but the work that we are doing, we weren't satisfying publicly. But they're saying that, that my, I mean, we can't get any of it.
Salaries pretty much are no. Unless you hire somebody new specifically for COVID, salaries are no and hazard pay is no.
Well, and I wasn't asking for any of that, I just thought, you know, just the reimbursement of that Surface would be. Because I wouldn't have bought a laptop to do work from home had it not been for that reason.
Yeah. Any other words you've got to say?
Not on those. I did ask for a little bit more money on the, to be put in the line for the elected officials' training fund. Normally, we did $1,500. I've asked that to be bumped up to $3,500. There's $20,388.78 in that fund right now. I know this year we haven't used much of it because nobody's going anywhere. But the state legislature passed a law stating that you can pay for room and board and meals and mileage for the elected official and anyone else in their office they deem important to go to those type of meetings. So I think in the future, that will grow and more people will access that account. And that's for the auditor, the treasurer, the surveyor, the clerk and the recorder's office. Those are the offices that benefit from that elected officials' training fund. So, and I know that AIC.
I was going to say, I was going to piggyback on that, on AIC conference. I just went ahead and paid $500 fee, they're, they offered for all, meaning the council, everybody. If they, you will be getting an email that if you sign up for one to 100 classes, you can go virtual and go on there. She even told me if I wanted the IT guy to go on, I could do that, so.
It's any county employee and it's the entire, it's the entire conference from the awards banquet to closing ceremonies. I'm not sure I can reveal the surprise. To 10 workshops that are eligible for institute credits. Again, if you're doing continuing, for those who have to track continuing education, there are 10 pin credits this year.
And they're allowing us to take that out of the elected officials' training fund issue as well.
Just one year.
Yeah, just this one year, but, I mean, that's an expense that's going to come out. We're okay on that because we haven't used hardly any. I know something that I paid for out of it earlier for our conference and then they canceled it and then they disbursed it and then they canceled it. It's just, it'll be paid for next year, so I don't know if we'll have that next year. But I think next year, hopefully, hopefully next year, everything will open back up and everybody can actually go physically to their conferences and, and, you know, mingle with their other elected officials and other cohorts in their departments. So that's why I'm asking a little bit more on that. On my, on my security ID fund, I'm asking for just a little bit more on it. Because of doing all the backloading that we're doing, every document that we backload, we have to redact. And so those redacting numbers, and I did have to lose some money this year to up that a little bit. Because we normally $2,000 and I had to put an extra $1,000 in there to help pay for that because I was over the $2,000. So the more documents that we put in, the more redacting that we do and the more that's going to go up. So I did ask for $3,000 to put in to that budget this year instead of just the two. And currently, the balance of that account's $34.5769. But I have a contract that I pay out at the first of the year through our software company, $2,000. But the first of the year comes out of there. So then if I run over those numbers in the middle of the year, I got to add more to it, then that's where the money, that's where I got to move more money to get that, so. Other than that, I don't know anything. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Thanks for coming in, thank you.
You're welcome. Y'all have a good day.
Bill, you're, you're up, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Bill. Basically, the commissioners go through the same process you do and just look through what we spent in the last year, what we can see that is going to change. Maybe a few items that we could, that we know are going to go down or we have a few items that we know that Bill's going to rise on and that's how we arrive at the budget. The three of us in Beth sit down together and work this through. I can go down through these individually with you if you'd like, but those are just what they are. I'm sorry.
You might tell them about the Wabash Valley because this is a change.
Yeah, the Wabash Valley one on there is listed, which is about, oh, two-thirds of the way down on the front page.
$3,000.04.
Yeah, it's listed at $148,784. And actually, we found out that it's going to, the total are going to come to $154,946. $154,946. So we've had to make a little alteration in that since, since the time we put together the budget.
So that would make the total $2,650,858 on the last page?
Yes. Can I try to answer any questions? There's one item here I'd like to talk to you about.
Go ahead.
RB?
Go ahead.
Okay. On the last, last page, we have radios, towers and repairs. We spend an awful lot of my own lease space on towers. And I'd like for you and us together to look at this and see if we may be coming to the point where we need to have our own tower. And that rather than pay leases that are continuously rising on us, that it might, it might be a better expenditure for us to own our own. I can't tell you at this point that that is absolutely the fact. It seems to be that way to me. If we could work together on that, you know, figure, figure out if that's the best route for the county to live. We appreciate it.
Have you done any numbers on the cost of it?
I don't, I don't, I'm not here now, but I can put them together for you, that's for sure. And it just seems like every once in a while I get, you know, my head snapped back up there with this suddenly here's how much money we're putting out on this or that are going to be a new charge or change or something. And I think we're pretty stable this year, but.
It seems pretty high school, seems like we're always getting hit.
Yeah.
From you kids. How many towers are utilizing now? Do you know?
I don't. You know. It's not paying, but, but, you know, I've, you know, that's a, the whole radio situation and all that such a technical thing that I just let those people handle it. This with 911 and all those, it's, it's a lot to think about and I don't know enough about that. I mean, I, my whole experience with down here at like 911 is I've sat in there a couple of days during my whole time watching it work. I don't have any real experience with 911. I, I'm just, I'm just thinking that this is one of those things that maybe it's not a good deal to keep leasing space.
In that, in that.
Go ahead, Doc, please.
No, he, Doc, I just.
I just said, I think it's a good idea to look in.
Yeah, I, I agree. This, this came up when we were discussing, I'm sorry, this came up when we were discussing a capital improvement plan. And we, we have not come to a conclusion on that. So if you could put, add that to your capital improvement plan and, and, and finish that document and get it back to us, that'd help us out because I've heard numbers thrown out about this that are many millions of dollars.
Yeah.
And, you know, these are the kinds of things that we need to be forecasting. And truth be told, I think that there's probably others that are of similar size that are floating around there that people are talking about, but nobody's written down on paper. And those are the things that make our decision-making challenging in terms of, you know, forecasting for 10 or 20 years down the road and plus, you know, being in the middle of COVID budgeting concerns that are right in our face.
Yeah, Cube Cap on the back here, we're ready to move to that. Are we, Josh, ready?
Yeah, oh yeah, please. Does, does any member have any question about the commissioner's budget? Cube Cap is 34.
Okay, we're looking at Cube Cap back here. We, we're looking at the ADA compliance. Our ADA official on that is Chris Paul Coats. And he has done a wonderful job in years past of itemizing out what things that we needed to accomplish per year. We were given a certain number of years to accomplish relatively full compliance. And we've done a pretty good job, I think, until this year. And this whole COVID deal just kind of messed it all up. We are, there are some things that need to be done yet. We haven't even talked about ADA compliance in so long because Paul's not coming to meetings because he's, he's very concerned about the COVID situation and taking it home to his, to his wife. And so most of our conversations are confined to, well, there's a problem and there's something that needs to be done, needs to be addressed, or that's on the phone, talking to it. Courthouse renovation, we're looking at right now the cost of doing the old museum, auditorium area into prosecutor area and putting it all together in one spot. Which I've taken the liberty of talking to, here's a friend of mine that's a prosecutor from Clinton County. And talked to him about how his works and how he has put them all together. Because when he, his name's Tony, when he came into office, his, his was a very divided office too, like ours is. And they consolidated it quite a bit. And, and he thinks it's improved a lot. But he was warning me that you really have to be careful when you're putting it together because each component of that has real privacy concerns. And you can't have some of them listening to what's going on over here or over here. And they, they have to keep, everybody in the office has to be very cognizant of that and everybody has, and you have to physically build the building or the office space to minimize any chance of cost contamination or information. But we're having prosecutor's office go through and they came to us with a very nice design and everything. It was too expensive, we thought. So they're back reworking it. He's supposed to come into us at the next meeting and give us more cost, but that's, we're asking for that to be continued on. Of course, you know that for years, we've had this hundred thousand dollars going in every time and we have not spent that because we're, we're thinking in terms of ramp for the courthouse, do we need another ramp? And we've removed the one out front. There was a lot of talk about we needed to replace the one out front. I don't think we do. I think this one back here will work just fine. I think we have plenty of handicap parking in this area, so it's natural we can do so to using this back ramp. And I would just as soon discontinue talking about any major renovation ramp up front. Everyone we came up with, every design we came up with that was, to our thinking as commissioners, suitable to looks of courthouse and not be an eyesore in the front. We always argue what's the front of the building. But on the south side of the building, vastly expensive. And I noticed today, when I came in, I was preceded by bringing prisoner in and they didn't have any problem parking down this area and coming up this back ramp and coming in. It makes it a little farther to go from this door to the elevator to go up. Which I suppose there's a little security concern there, but I think it can be overcome by. Which I suppose there's a little security concern there, but I think it can be overcome by just doing a, um, I don't think that we have to have it from. So really what we're looking at as far as courthouse improvement is the old, uh, uh, museum. Space that originally was designed as a auditorium. We'll have more numbers on that for you now, but we're certainly hoping to stay pretty tight to this budget here. Of course, the analyst's corner vehicle, you graciously granted money for that. She has not yet been able to find a vehicle that matches what she needs. Apparently, a four-wheel-drive, four-door, long-bed pickup truck is not readily funded. Did she find one on?
She called me last night when he knew what procedures were and I have not been able to tell you, but she thinks she has found one.
She thinks, okay. Well, Steve was after her pretty good at the last commissioner meeting to get it done. You know, we're all ready to, to have this new vehicle and, uh, you have put the money in and let's see the vehicle. And, and, uh, so I, I think the product grew up pretty good. Courthouse elevator, we're gonna have to spend some money on this elevator. Now, I think as long as I've been in, we've had discussions about a new elevator shaft and all that needs to be done. Because right now there's not room in the elevator for a gurney, which if there was, something happened, somebody had a heart attack, there was something, uh, you know, happened on the third or second floor, they needed to get a gurney in it, the only way is to carry it downstairs. We're talking big bucks there. We're, you know, finding, finding a space and everything to put a new shaft in. Because making that shaft larger is not really a very good option and, uh, it'd be out of service during the whole time and we're, uh, putting in a new one in that spot, which I think is the biggest problem. But perhaps around the corner where the, right now we have the vending machines like that would be a good spot for us to go up through there. It's not a hot button issue though. It's not something I think we have to run out and do this, this year. We do have to fix the one that's there. And, uh, if you wanna get complaints from, uh, some of the young ladies here in the, uh, in the courthouse why I have an elevator that will stop and then suddenly drop about two feet and, uh, gives everybody quite a thrill and they're not very happy about it. And that's what we've had for a while. It just doesn't, uh, it's worn out. And so we, we have entered into contract as of the last meeting. We've been through several meetings of discussing what we needed to do, how much money each portion of it was due and, and we're, we're looking at right now putting up, using, we've got this whole amount, darn everything. To get that elevator, a new system that will make it stop at the right spot and not drop and, uh, doors open when you get there. Uh, people somehow don't like it when they get to this floor and the door won't open for them.
So the sixty thousand is just maintenance for the current?
Pardon me?
The sixty thousand is just maintenance for the current elevator?
It's for the current elevator and it's really not maintenance. It's taking a bunch of the old stuff out, putting in a new, new controls and, and, and new, a lot of new stuff on it. I'm not, again, technical enough to tell you.
The power unit they have paid to go ahead and do this year because we have an EUCAP budget now. And so this is the extra two phases that the custodian has. And the custodian has that power unit in his budget too. And so he'll tell you that that's not probably being that and, um, that's all.
No, that I appreciate that. Yep, good power here, good control. It, it's really a pretty, uh, intricate deal. And of, of all the things we've done out of Carroll Manor, the one that's required an awful lot of time and maintenance and adjustment, I reckon it's been a darn devil there, um, because it, it's just a continuous thing on. And it has been, it is right now on this one. I don't know, is there anything else on there I need to talk to you about? I don't know.
Yeah.
What?
The ambulance, this is the year that they purchased an ambulance. That's why it's increased so much. And then also the EMA vehicle, um, has been promised and we put in five thousand, I don't know how many, but anyway, it's time for him to have a new vehicle, even though that is, so that's why that's in there.
So Beth and maybe Billy, it's true that this, we've had this conversation over multiple years. Why isn't the health department vehicle in EUCAP budget?
The what?
The health department? Cause we just.
Because the health department has their own tax rate and so they purchase their own.
They have their own tax rate and they also get their own, uh, funding from the state as far as, uh, grants, so.
Two F D's that I see.
Pretty well, pretty well, our own vehicle. As far as E, EMS director vehicle, um. Huh?
There's no, that's been done this year.
Yeah, it's, I, I always give EMA first, man, for director. I'm not the one promising a new vehicle, so. I think it probably is tough. Had a succeeding amount of new vehicles there's a kind of, he goes to about every auto accident emergency. I don't know why, but, uh, and, uh, he's on a monologue. Anything else? Glad to see you here, Kristen.
All right. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
All right, we're doing this. All right, Kristen. I'm Pearson, sir.
Kirsten.
Kirsten. Sorry. It feels like Monday.
What?
It feels like Monday.
Before I begin, do, does anybody have any questions for me, um, in regards to how the scale's going? Since you've got that moving a topic?
Sure.
It's going great. It's made my job so much easier. Um, I've had very few complaints about the price. Um, thank you. Thank you. It's just made it a ton easier out there. Um, I pretty much kept everything about the same. I did ask for the eighty thousand for the waste management versus the forty, um, for the year this year. Uh, basically because every June they're supposed to raise the rate on me per pound. Um, they have not done it yet this year due to COVID. I don't know what they're gonna raise it to. Next year is when the contract expires and then I can put this out elsewhere.
So you're, that's July of twenty twenty-one?
Yes. Yeah, I got it wrote down. You have to do it so many months beforehand, but not so many day, it's, yeah. Well, and I told the representative I'm going to look elsewhere, so she, yeah, she knows. To maintain the scale every year, um, it's an additional five hundred and twenty-five dollars. I did put in scale repairs. I talked to the guy. There's nothing that should, the, the most expensive thing that could happen to it, uh, would be something with the calibration. It'd be thirteen hundred dollars. Um, but with that being new, he didn't anticipate that to happen. Did you kind of make a few small cuts to try to keep it as, you know, minimal as possible as far as janitorial supplies, office supplies? I did even have that report due as well.
It was before your time, I'm sure. When the last time this was bid, uh, waste management and so forth. Are there several companies that will bid on it or one or three?
I think there's like three or four that I've jotted down that I need to call once that time comes. Um, there's only a, so many that will pull the compactor. Um, it, it's their equipment as well. I mean, I gotta find somebody that provides the compactor containers.
I guess what I'm thinking is if other companies know, yeah, it's gonna be a competitive bid. I wonder if that would be any help there.
I mean, I'd have to say in the field, waste management is definitely the most expensive. I don't know who rates behind them. Um, I'm not really sure. But I have several people wrote down that were interested. Um, so hopefully I can get a much better price than what I'm getting now. And hopefully it won't be, you know, every year they're upping it. I mean, I understand to a certain extent, but they don't even give you a percentage of what they're gonna up it every year. They're just gonna decide what they wanna up it. That's just it.
So that's a special container, the compactor. I know Wampers is, you know, very price competitive. Hopefully they'll do, you, you give you a bid when you, when you call them.
Right.
On the compactor container.
The good thing I like about waste management though is, I mean, you get what you pay for. So when I'm full, I call that day, they're there the next morning. And that's really huge for me because especially during the summer, if I'm taking in a lot of trash and I'm full, I can't really leave it. I don't like to leave it in the summer. It's pile up because you get mice, rats, you know. So, um, the reliability is huge for me, um, to be able to come the next day. So I'm hoping whoever I reach out to will be able to provide that as well.
Are you expecting a fairly sizable increase in utilities?
So it appears that R M C accidentally overcharged us. Um, and I've gotten that problem fixed and we now have a thousand dollar credit. So I won't have to pay anything, I believe, until November. So, yeah, I used a bunch all at once and then I'm like, a nine hundred dollar electric bill, but nobody was there, there's a problem. And so they came out, fixed it, and now I have a credit.
So just, uh, when, when was the, when did the scales get installed? Like, when were they actually being used and trash being weighed and piece?
Um, I opened that up the day after Memorial Day.
So basically the first of June? Okay. Um, so this is a, I mean, what else could twenty-two run the break, sir? But, um, to date, we have twenty-three thousand dollars in receipts and expenses of eighty thousand dollars. Eighteen. Well, that includes the scale. So if we take, the, the year to date is eighty-one thousand, nine hundred, well, uh, I'm sorry. This is, this, no, this was through the, this is the period, this is, this was our halfway through the year. So this is a period ending six thirty twenty-two. So this is a snapshot of half the year. So the first half of the year, which is COVID, right? But, um, twenty-one, or twenty-one, I say twenty-one, twenty-three thousand revenue, eighty-one thousand in expense. That includes thirty-four thousand for the, uh, the scale. So.
Fifty.
Yeah, forty-seven thousand. So we're fifty percent. I mean.
I do have the thirty thousand dollar grant money that, um, I have every year that applies to that as well, that helps offset, um, which is something that I did.